I'm going to call to order the Committee of the Whole for September 29th, 2025. Clerk Boeck, could you please do the roll?
Councilmember Cost.
Here.
Councilmember Brown. Councilmember Spatafor. Councilmember Carter.
Here.
Councilmember Pelley Van Ooglu.
Present.
Councilmember Garza. Councilmember Hussein.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
Present.
You have six members present.
Thank you. Okay, next it is public comment. If anyone from the public wishes to speak.
Three minutes.
Oh, sorry. I'm going ahead of myself here.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve September 22nd minutes as presented.
Okay, we have proper motion in place. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, passes unanimously. Now, we are under the section where it's public comment. You'll have up to three minutes. You can come up to the podium. And if you could please share your name for the record.
Loretta Stanaway. Budget priorities. I see you are doing better this time around. You do have a mention in the proposed priorities to add three to six fire department and personnel department positions. It's unclear if you mean three of each, or six of each, or altogether six, or altogether three, whatever is not clear. What is clear is that you still have ahead of those priorities $100,000 for housing legal assistance, $75,000 for a feasibility study, $300,000 to boost the budget for LEDC, which as far as I'm concerned is ineffective and doesn't deserve a budget increase, $500,000 for facade grants, $50,000 for citizen complaints, and $150,000 for a disability inclusion consultant. Now, I understand that, you know, these are all nice bells and whistles, and people ask for them, and it's nice to be able to say yes, but I will tell you what. When somebody needs a cop or a fireman, they aren't going to care if there's a disability inclusion consultant in the budget, or if the tin can got a facade improvement. They're going to want those policemen and those firemen available and on scene. So I think you need to dig a little deeper, do a little more work, and move those things up to the very first priority. There should not be anything else on the list before those positions. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any further public comment? Seeing none, we're going to move on. Next, we are on to number five. Item B, a resolution for a special assessment principal shopping district for the 2025 role. I believe that Jennifer's in the crowd. We had a presentation from her at our last meeting about this. We can bring her down if we have any more questions, or we can, if there's no discussion on this, we can move this forward. I see no discussions. So Vice President Carter?
All right. Well, I will make a motion for the resolution of special assessment principal shopping district 2025 role.
Okay, we have proper motion in place. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, passes unanimously. Next, we are on to item C, a resolution for the budget priorities for fiscal year '26 and '27. So has everyone had an opportunity to look through these budget priorities? Do we have any thoughts on what's in here? I know that I sit on development and planning, and we went through ours, and we're very thorough on our opinions, and public safety, the same. Councilmember Pelley Van Ooglu?
Thank you, President Cost. Just to say that, at least with the public safety budget requests, I was really happy that what we did was took a look at what had been requested last year, and we've taken some steps forward this year with our request. It really builds off of what we had been trying to achieve, and so with thorough discussion in committee, I think that the public safety requests are realistic, and I think that they're needed. So I'm happy to support those. Thank you.
Okay, and then we have Committee of the Whole priorities, and some of these we've, we did get in this last budget, I believe. Number seven, the feasibility study for a community center located in southeast Lansing. I do believe that was included in the budget this year, so if no one has objections, we can probably strike that one. Does anyone have any opinions on the funding sidewalk repair for a total of a million to perhaps raise that total? As Councilmember Spatafor knows, we went to, both went to the presentation for public service on sidewalk, bike paths, that kind of thing. And one of the things he said is they need, what, $11 or $12 million a year to be able to be on an actual cycle for sidewalks? Right now, we're at that million, which doesn't get anywhere near what they need, so without, you know, any objection, I would venture to, oh, yeah, just to increase that amount another $300,000 and ask for 1.3 million. Councilmember Jackson?
Just for the conversation, I'm a little bit hesitant to just add numbers to it, because do you know anybody besides Andy Kilpatrick and maybe a few people know what $300,000 gets you in sidewalks? Does anybody know? Because I don't exactly know, but I have a feeling it's something like a block or something very, you know, I would say small compared to the whole city, the whole problem. So, yes, it takes 12 million to start to catch up on the cycle, to be where we want to be, to like be able to replace and have good sidewalks. Right. I mean, that's aspirational to get to 12 million someday. But then, for the same people who want the roads, it's so many more millions to get up to the point where, you know, where the street level is like a five out of 10 overall, you know, like there's certain things. So it's like so much money that these increases are great, but the mayor's has the budget, and he has the plan. I'm comfortable with significant funding to address the problem, because it's so arbitrary just saying, just put it up, especially when he still gets to pick what the number is, and then we approve. So if it comes back like 1.5, or if it comes back like 1 million, or 800,000, or whatever it is, I don't know. It's, it's just like what it gets is so small. So that's my thought about that sidewalk adding the numbers.
And I appreciate that, Councilman Jackson, and this is what I would say is, you, you probably are right, that that's not going to put in brand-new sidewalks or a whole lot of them, but with the grinding that we can do to fix a lot of the tripping hazards, that would certainly grind down and level a lot of sidewalks. I'm not sure if they rent that tool, or if they buy it, if they purchased it, Councilman Hussein?
No, I was just going to, I was just going to add that. When we look at a million dollars, it's really difficult to answer your question, because this deals with repair, it deals with replacement, it deals with gap closure, deals with, I mean, the list goes on and on. And so we're not talking about necessarily all replacement, or all gap closure, or all, and you have grinding, and you have asphalt wedging, and you have, I mean, again, the list goes on, and then obviously, we try to bear the brunt of, when we look at replacement, anytime a city tree in the public right of way has actually damaged that sidewalk, obviously, we try to take that. I mean, there's, it's, it's a nuanced conversation. I did see that Mark had his hand up, though.
Mr. Lawrence?
If you would like sidewalk numbers, I pulled them from last year's annual report. 2,315 sidewalk joints cut, 209 sections of sidewalk wedged with asphalt.
And that was, that was with 700,000, correct? Not 1 million? Because 1 million's for this budget.
I believe that's correct.
What was the second number?
2,315 sidewalk joints cut, 209 sections of sidewalk wedged. So that's, that's, you know, the grinding, and then the wedging.
Yep. And that was with 300,000 less. Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you. I guess a question on that would be, did we have the capacity to use all of that money? Because it's really our, paying our employees, and, you know, the equipment, whatever, and however this is calculated, but did we have the capacity to do that? Because we, we are out of capacity for some spots that require manpower, so.
My understanding to answer, I think it was your question, Councilman Hussein, it is a contractor that does that work for us. I believe.
Okay, so it'd be, so right, more to pay, so it'd be more, we just pay more for the contractor services to do more work?
As long as they have the capacity to do the work, yeah.
So, do we want to change this to fund sidewalk repair in a significant way, significant amount of money, or put a dollar amount in there? Does this committee have any opinions? I'm doing a lot of talking here, folks. Councilmember Spatafor?
I'm not trying to be contrary, but I've always argued that if we're asking for budget priorities, we should be specific in the dollar asks we're asking. And so I would support an amount, but I also could go either way. I just, that's always been my mantra on these, their dollar amounts we're requesting, that we would like to see minimal funding levels. And that's a 30%, bump over this year.
Councilman Hussein?
Yeah, and I was actually going to say something similar. I think, I think that's what we have to keep in mind. This is simply a wish list that we're putting together.
Yeah.
And by putting a dollar amount in there, we, we're saying, look, in terms of our wish list, we know we need about 11, 12, to 12 million dollars to do our 550 miles of sidewalk justice. That doesn't include, obviously, you know, obviously, trying to tick off some of the provisions of the gap closure report. But that being said, a bottom for us would be that 1.3, I would almost say maybe 1.5, but that 1.3, and of course, we'd love to see the administration go above and beyond that, because we know we need it.
Well, you know, since you mentioned it, this is a wish list, wish list, I think 1.5 sounds clean. You know, we may not get it, but we can ask for it. I think that this is at least, you know, trying to ask to spend public funds in a way that benefits citizens. So if we want to edit that to 1.5, does anyone else have anything else on these Committee of the Whole priorities?
Since this is a resolution that you will take action on here, and then at council, for that one, did you want it to be specific in the amount as you were last time, or do you want it to specifically just say, fund sidewalk repair for a total of 1.5 million?
I think for a total of 1.5 million, sounds cleaner. Yes, with a priority on, the, the last part, with a priority placed on underserved areas. Yes, please. Unless anyone has a disagreement with that. Okay. So we've got eight.
I don't have a disagreement with that.
Oh, Councilmember Spatafor?
The next one I have is a question was local street repair. Did we leave that at the 7 million, or were we going to? Because I think if we leave it at 7 million, we take it out, right?
So the question is, do we leave it at 7 million, or do we take it out?
Well, are we plusing that up, or leaving it at 7 million? Because as it's written right now, it was last year of adding 1.7 million, so it'd either be 7 million or 8.7 million, and if it's 7 million, it's not really a new priority, so take it out.
Yeah, so increase, so you're saying you want to do another increase of 1.7 this year?
Or some amount of, I think that the number we usually use, about a million dollars per lane mile, is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah, and there should be additional road revenue coming our way.
From the state.
From the state.
So maybe we say 2 million? An additional 2 million?
Or a total of nine?
Councilmember Jackson?
That's math I can do.
Well, just a comment. So what's probably going to happen is that it's going to be increased, everything's going to be increased. The sidewalks are going to be increased by a little bit, the streets are going to be increased by a little bit. The administration is going to say, I've increased funding for roads and sidewalk repairs. Council's going to say the same thing. And we have, and we will, and we will see some increases. But what we are agreeing to, let's say we get that amount, we're basically saying, we're going to increase them, but it's still 20 million below what it takes to be decent, where everybody wants it to be. So we're going to keep doing this every year, and it's fine, because that's probably the only thing that we can do in Lansing, and hope for outside funding, or state, or federal funding, we just keep increasing it until the people decide that now roads and sidewalks are not whatever number one, two, or three priority for funding, and then whatever that one, two, or three is going to be getting those bumps until it's not. And roads and sidewalks has been a priority for at least a decade plus now, so it's winning, it's going to keep winning with going up. It's just like, we are saying, and we all know, that even the increases that we're doing is not going to fix the problem. So it does make some help, you know, here and there, like you guys said, and like it really does, but, I mean, I'll support it for that reason, but, yeah, we're agreeing, we're saying, so now we're going to fund roads. So what, what number was it, 7 million?
Nine.
All right, 9 million. But eight years ago, we needed 25 million to catch up every year, so we're agreeing to underfund our roads. But we're doing what we can with the money we got, so I appreciate everybody.
And I don't disagree with you. I think there's a lot of problems with the formula at the state level. I mean, that keeps getting repeated. You know, you, you look at communities that have much less traffic, and they've repaved the same road like three times in the last 10 years, and, you know, we're scraping to get one road done in 50 or 60 years. So I get it. I understand what you're saying, and we are absolutely undercutting. I think this is just a wish list of what we think we can do with what resources we have, as you said. Councilmember Hussein?
Yeah, and, and I could be, Mark could correct me, I could be totally wrong on my numbers, but from what I recall, is that we asked for an additional 1.7 over the 5.3 that we were funding, to get to 7 million. Transmittal letter came back and said that the mayor actually went above and beyond that, and through two different sources from both local ruts and roads, and then actually pulling in some from major roads, that they were going to, that we were going to fund local roads at 10 million. With that being said, we're still hearing, and we still know, because we drive the streets of Lansing every single day, that our local roads are in really, really bad shape. And so would it be smarter, instead of saying 2 million to 9 million, just 2 million additionally over the fiscal year 2026 budget, not budgeted number for local roads? Do you see what I'm saying? Okay.
Is there any objection to that? That sounds good. And keeping, I assume keeping the, in underserved priority, underserved areas?
Yeah.
Could you make an additional over the?
Next, fiscal year?
Over the, over the fiscal year 2026 budgeted amount for local roads. I know there's a lot there, but, and I think, again, what this does is, I think it reinforces from us what we're hearing from our constituents. We know we're going to have, have an ask from the departmental director to the mayor, so I think it's just everybody's at the table saying, look, we need, the spirit of it is right, we need additional dollars into our local roads, period.
Okay, so we've got those. Mark?
For the record, we're, we're there right with you. I mean, right now, we are asking our state-level officials, local, 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 local roads.
And, yeah, and I didn't mean to imply.
No, I know, right, yeah, 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 yeah.
Though I didn't see you out there paving roads. Okay, so do we have any, any other discussions on these priorities? Councilmember Jackson?
Sorry.
We're going to be buds.
I didn't want you guys to get out here all early and have a whole hour before the next meeting. So, number one, $100,000 focused specifically on housing legal assistance for tenants, homeowners in the city. Is, that's still on there, right? Because, it's still on there? I like being able to do that, but I think people need eviction support, and that could be legal, and it is legal. We had an eviction specialist that got cut. We heard from our 54A District Court people that that person, I remember Judge Ward was in here, some other, the administrator, Cynthia King Brewer, Anethia, sorry, Anethia Brewer, was here, and they basically said like, this is a great program, it's keeping people out, it's, it's helping people, you know, we're able to do this and the other thing. So, in the spirit of, because why would people need housing legal assistance for tenants? To basically probably stay in their place, or not get screwed by having, having to live in a red-tagged home, or a home that needs to be coated up, or whatever the problem is? So wouldn't that kind of be like the eviction specialist? Or, because, because $100,000 for legal assistance, that's not even going to do anything if that's really what it's for. So should we try to bring back the eviction specialist? And our 54A District Court people would also root for that, probably. Just, just a thought.
Should, are you suggesting we maybe take one out and just specifically say, bring back the eviction diversion specialist position? Or fund the eviction diversion specialist position?
Yes. And again, it's a wish list, right? I think.
I would, I would leave the dollar amount blank, because I don't know what, if everyone's in agreement, I will, I don't know how much they would need, but it, I mean, I, we've heard great things about that program, so I would be supportive of this if there's any objection. Okay?
Yeah.
Councilmember Hussein?
Not only have we heard great things, but we've actually been able to effectuate great things for people by working, when we obviously had the individual in that position, by working through him and using him as a resource. I mean, it was, it was very, very, very helpful.
Do we have any other discussion on the budget priorities? Vice President Carter?
I just had a question of clarification. Councilwoman Pelley Van Ooglu, can you remind me, and you may have said it, and I may have missed it, for 0.5, the funding for three to four, or three to six officers for LFD and LPD, was that separate, or is that collectively, or are we doing three LFD, three?
My understanding was separate, three LFD, three LPD, or between three to six for each entity, not total. Thank you for the clarification.
Councilmember Jackson?
Even before you brought that up, I wanted to go back to that specific one, because I've got on the administration about basically boasting the funding of the new police positions when we still have all the vacancies that haven't been filled. So I've got to still say it here, that why would we put in the budget, so whatever else, roads or sidewalks, into more police vacancies when they haven't shown that they can close the vacancy gap to, to less than, I guess, three or six? And we've heard for many years, the reasons why, and they're all legitimate, and then the plans, sometimes good plans or bad plans to address them, the academy, the XYZ, but not yet have I heard about the gap being closed close enough to like warrant that. So I would object to that. I won't, you know, I can't, it's not a vote or anything, but I wouldn't want to see that in the budget priorities, because then, when it happens, and it probably will, because nobody wants to say they didn't fill three or, that they didn't put three or six police officers on the street. Because we've been putting police officers on the street for the last seven years, except we've been funding those positions for the last seven years, but it has been transferring to more officers on the street. So that's what this would do. It would make it so that we can fund and say it, but like, it doesn't put them out there. I would support finding a way to increase their salaries by 3% to 6% so that more people will apply, and then those vacancies would go from 20 to 19, to 18, 17, 16, 15, and now those are all officers on the street. But that's all I got for that.
Councilman Jackson, I think one of the problems that the chief, both chiefs have expressed is retirements, trying to keep up with retirements at 25 and out, which we don't have the same policy the state police do. I mean, your retirement doesn't get any better after 25 and out. So people will retire at 25 years, and that leads us, leaves us with a lot of retirements, and then you're trying to backfill. So it always seems like there's a constant revolving door of these openings, but truly, it's, we're, we're trying to fill, as I, as I understand it, as quickly as we can, but we're also trying to keep up with those retirements. Because, you know, I, I think that those are both desirable positions, especially with pension plans still available to, to both of those positions, so, and, but I understand what you're saying, like, we have a vacancy factor, and I'm not totally sure, I don't know, Mark, if you know what the current vacancy is with LPD or LFD? Okay. I, I think it's probably going to be a constant battle. Councilmember?
Yeah, no, I think that was perfectly stated. There was many, many, many years ago, when staffing went all the way down to, after the Great Recession, I think it was like some 186, we, we saw, because of the 25 and out, we were seeing our numbers at like 155 to 160 in terms of actual positions funded. And so now that we're at 212, or 213, I think it is, we typically see ourselves up in the 190s in terms of positions actually filled, but you're always going to see some of that, right? Because you have that, that 25 and out piece. But I absolutely, I think what this does is it reinforces everything we talked about back in May, when we passed a resolution basically asking the administration to continue to increase staffing for both departments at three to six per year until we get to adequate staffing levels, and at the same time, we asked that a study be conducted to determine what, when we talk about a city our size and the call volume, what that would look like for both departments. And so, obviously, we're still awaiting the results of that, but in the meantime, I think we need to, at every turn, continue to reinforce and support what we continue to hear from the residents across the city of Lansing, that our levels are not adequate. And it's not just them, right? It's our frontline employees as well, saying, we need more help. When you, when you look at a fire department that used to have 52 firefighters a day, and now we're at 41, that is a, you know, some 21, 22% decrease in staff, even though we have a 60% increase in calls since that same time back in 2011. So we have to do more, I think we have been doing more, but I think this continues to train down the tracks.
Okay, Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you, and I appreciate that. But, so I'm thinking, what is better, having the, you know, three more unfunded positions to go from, for example, I'll go down 15 vacancies to 18 funded vacancies, and 190 police officers on the street? Or we take, we keep the, the number funded as it is, where we still have 15 vacancies and hopefully 14, and hopefully, and then by the end of the year, it's down to five, and it's like, city council, now's the time to fund more police officers, because we got it down. And then we take that money and do other things with it. Because we keep locking up our money by, by adding more vacant positions, because we can't get the vacancy down for the retirements, all the things, where we can't do anything else with that money. So we want to get them on the, the officers on the street, we would increase their benefits or what they earn, so that the vacancy factor will go down, because more people will be staying, or more people will be trying to come here. And then the next year's city council can add more positions, or whenever it gets close enough within 10, or whatever you guys think is good. But right now, it's literally, they never answer me every time I ask. I'm like, can you tell me how many it is? It's 15, it's 20, it's 19, it's that many, how much money is, is that? We want them on the street, we don't want them on paper.
You know, and I totally understand your point of view there, and, and I think, I think it's important, though, with the vacancy factor, that, you know, that money that's put in there is not necessarily just used for something else, it just rolls over to the next year, and those, those positions are funded yet again with the same money, or different money goes to the general fund, pulls back out of the general fund to fund those. So even if we were to dump all of those positions that are currently open and say, we're no longer going to fund any of these vacancies, it would just be a one-time payment of whatever the vacancy factor is, because it's the same money just rolling over and over, if that makes sense.
Right. I mean, it's just that the mayor probably will fund three to six more positions each, and then it will increase unless something had that abnormal happens, where we just all of a sudden get a pickup, and it will increase that, and then our eviction specialists that we wanted won't, might not come to fruition. Our extra money, well, the sidewalks will, because it's a priority, but whatever else we wanted won't come to fruition because of it.
Thank you, Councilman Jackson. Do we have any further discussion on the budget priorities? Vice President Carter?
I just have one more quick clarifying question. For the Committee on Public Safety, the continue slash sustain funding LFD apprentice slash internship program, is this, is this the same as the cadet program, or is it separate?
Councilmember Pelley Van Ooglu?
Yeah, I believe it's separate than the cadet program.
Thank you.
That was a continuation of that.
Yeah, so you have a program. Yeah, so you have a program that's actually sponsored, facilitated by the Lansing Fire Department, that's what we're talking about. And then there's an additional fire science academy that's part of Lansing Tech.
Councilmember Pellevano-Glu.
Thank you. And just to say, you know, I really appreciate what Councilman Jackson is saying. And I think this is something that we all struggle with when we think about, how do we increase capacity? We can increase capacity by raising salaries, right? Being more attractive, that's a conversation that's absolutely been had in this room. And so I don't disagree with what you're saying, and I think it's interesting. I mean, as, as a council, it is something to really think about. And you've given me a lot to think about by, by making your argument up here. Increase salaries to get people in and then add capacity for additional firefighters and police officers, yet at the same time, and we do hear from LFD specifically, right? I mean, they're working overtime, just the hours that they put in, and they're exhausted. And, you know, who's gonna pick up the slack if we don't add capacity there? So it's not that I disagree with you, but I do think that we should try in a variety of ways to get people in the door. And I don't, I don't think it's a bad idea, what you've proposed, and it's definitely given me some, somewhere to think about down the road. So thank you for that.
Okay. Do we have any further discussion? Seeing none, Vice President Carter.
All right. I will make a motion for the resolution budget priorities for fiscal year 2026, 2027.
Okay. We have a proper motion in place? Yeah.
Yes, as amended.
Okay, as amended. We have a motion in place? Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, oppose, passes unanimously. Okay. Next, we are on to item D, closed session. Vice President Carter.
All right. Pursuant to the MCL 15.268E, city council will recess into closed session to consult with the city attorney in connection with the following specific pending litigation. An open meeting will have a detrimental financial effect on the litigating or settlement position of the, of the city of Lansing concerning these cases. Bernard versus City of Lansing, Myers, Pulver, and Solzabi. CDDM Corporation versus City of Lansing, City of Lansing versus 113 West Michigan LLC and JAJ Property LLC, City of Lansing versus Eli Lilly, City of Lansing et al. versus Purdue Pharma et al., City of Lansing versus Woodmeadow, Woodside Meadows Apartment Owner LLC, Davis versus City of Lansing et al., Davis et al. versus City of Lansing, Esken versus City of Lansing, Fitzpatrick versus City of Lansing, Fitzpatrick versus City of Lansing et al., Fountain versus City of Lansing, and Barbara Benov Harkin versus City of Lansing, Hockenson versus City of Lansing et al., Hulan versus City of Lansing et al., Mingus versus City of Lansing et al., Republic, Republican National Committee versus City of Lansing, Robinson Memorial Church of God and Christ versus City of Lansing, Romero versus City of Lansing et al., Turk Olson versus City of Lansing, Wes Malcolm X LLC versus City of Lansing, and Willis versus City of Lansing et al.
Clerk Boe, could you please do the roll?
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Pellevano-Glu?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein?
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor?
[laughing].
Councilmember Cost?
Yes.
Motion carries 6-0.
Okay. We are in closed session. Okay, we are reconvening from closed session, and with no other business before this body. We are adjourned at 6:55. We will take a 15-minute break between meetings. 15 minutes, start at 7:10.